will now be recorded.
Okay. Now, what we'll try to understand is so far whatever we did was something related to business requirement. And then we did about configuration. Then we did master data. And then we posted some transactions. We generated reports. Clear everyone so far whatever we did?
Yes.
Yes sir.
Next what we need to do is we need to make sure something called as table. There is something called as tables. Okay. When we talk about table, we need to understand all this information is getting recorded or it is getting stored in which table. The way T code is important in the similar way table is also important for us to work in a project. So you cannot ignore the table, you need to make sure slowly you're feeling comfortable confident even with the table. Now for this what we need to do is we'll have to go back to what we have done so far. Currently, the things that we have done is with respect to GL. AP. AR and then bank, am I right? This is what we did so far. Worked on GL, we worked on AP, AR and then bank. Now within these four, we specifically worked on these three points. Right?
Yes.
Configuration for GL, master data creation for GL and then transaction data for GL. In short, table is applicable for these three points. Reason whenever you do any configuration, are you drawing save or not?
Yes.
Yes sir.
You are saving the configuration. Similarly, are we saving the master?
Yes. Yes.
Are we saving the transaction?
Yes.
So whenever you click on save, what will happen? The data will come to database table. It will go to database table. Now these database table is what we need to understand. Reason whatever you configure, you are configuring everything in a specific screen or in a specific transaction code. Right? You are configuring in a specific T code or in a specific transaction. The moment you save it, it will go sit in a table. Sometimes what will happen? Data will go to a single table. Sometimes data will go to multiple table depending on the transaction, depending on the config, depending on the master. It may be updated in a single table or it may be updated in multiple table. It is our responsibility to understand what are all the tables which are getting updated during the saving. When you do a save, where it will go and how it is getting stored, we need to slowly understand. For that first what we will do is we will keep configuration on hold for time being. Okay, we will see this is to be discussed later. At this moment, it is not relevant to us. Configuration at this moment, it is not required for us to see the table. This I will make you understand when we are actually preparing or understanding related to interview related concept. At this moment, config is not required. Let us go to master and then let us go to transaction. This is what we majority lead deal with in your day to day SAP FICO consulting. Not about the config, you will majority lead play with master and then transaction. Because this is what your business is dealing with, right?
Yes.
Yes sir.
Your business is dealing with master and then the transaction. As a FICO consultant, you also need to understand the table related to master and the table related to transaction. If you go to GL. Now what we'll do? I'll write something here. Let me put transaction. Details. And here I'll put table name. If I say the first one. If I talk about let's say master data. If I specifically highlight master data here. First one, I will say GL master. What other master we created before posting the first GL document? GL to GL.
Profit Center Master.
Profit Center Master, Customer Master.
Only for GL posting is what I mean to say.
Profit Center.
Profit Center.
Profit Center and then you also need cost center, am I correct?
Yeah.
In short, to post a GL document wherein debit a GL account, credit also GL account, you will be requiring GL master, Profit Center Master and then Cost Center Master. To create a GL master. We are all aware. The T code rate, where it is created? Where is it created?
FS double zero.
FS double zero.
Double zero.
It is created in FS double zero. Profit Center was created in KE fifty one. Cost Center will be created in KS zero one, right? These are the screens or T code where Cost Center is created, Profit Center is created, GL is created. Similarly, when you go to a table, for everything there is a corresponding table in the backend. Now to look at a GL account from a table, you have to go to something called as SK A one. Okay, and then SK B one. And then SK eighty. These are the three tables that you'll have to remember when it comes to GL account master. Similarly, when you talk about Profit Center, what is the table? Anyone, any idea?
Yes.
C E P C sir.
It is C E P C. And C E P C underscore B U K R S. These are the two tables which we need to remember when it comes to Profit Center. Similarly, when it comes to Cost Center, what is the table? CS KS. It is CS KS. As of now, these three tables are enough. There are additional tables also related to it which I'll make you understand how you can list out the other table. But whatever we are writing now are something which are important for you to remember. Okay, no other exception. These are mandatory for everybody to remember. This is with respect to GL master data. After creating the GL master data, we posted the GL document. Now to post a document, let me put something like GL transaction. When we specify about GL transaction. What we did here? Whenever you post any GL document. You have something called as accounting document, right? We simply call it as GL accounting document. For posting a GL accounting document, what was the T code we used? So far we used F dash zero two is what we were using. Using F dash zero two, what happened? It posted an accounting document, debit credit into a GL account. Now when you posted this debit credit into a GL account, it will update different tables in the backend. First one is here BK PF. And then it will update.
B sec.
B sec. And then it will update AC Doka.
AC Doka.
And then it will update.
Fagel Flexa.
Fagel Flexa. Okay. This is with respect to. Let me be very particular. Accounting document, not GL document, let us be very particular, accounting document. Meaning every accounting document will go to BK PF, B sec, AC Doka and then Fagel Flexa. Are these four tables clear?
Yes.
Yes.
Similarly, when you talk about particularly GL open item document. GL open item document, it is also same. And this will have exclusive to table. Any idea what are those two specific table with respect to GL open item document?
BS IS.
Yes.
BS IS and?
BS IS.
Yes.
IS. Now here what I'll do, I'll just highlight this and this. What did I highlight here?
Yes sir.
Yes sir.
Yes. Okay, this is with respect to GL.
Sir, open item in the sense, sir, open item document in the sense.
I'll make you understand. Yeah, yeah, I'll make you understand these points practically. Now we will post the document in a new company code wherein we will see the impact on the table side. So far what we did, we were only creating the config, posting the document, looking at the report. Ensuring you are conceptually clear on executing a cycle, right?
Hmm.
Now we will execute one more cycle wherein you will see the impact in the table. What are we doing? How it is getting affected in the table? How you need to go back and then pull the information from the table? Same thing, but we will look at it in a different perspective going forward. Okay?
Okay.
Now this is with respect to GL master, GL transaction. Similarly, if I put let's say GL here. Next what I'll do is I'll put customer master. When we talk about customer master, only one thing we created for customer. That is your BP customer, am I right?
Yes.
Yes sir.
We created BP customer. To create a BP customer, what was the T code used?
BP.
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 We used BPT code. When you use a BPT code, if it is related to a customer, we need to understand what database tables will get updated. Point number one, it is BUT triple zero. Point number two, it will be BUT one hundred. And then you'll have to remember what is the customer table? Any guess anyone? Customer tables.
KN A one.
KN A one. KN A one.
KN B one.
KN.
B one.
B one. Alright.
PK. KN BB.
KN BB. These are sufficient. Okay, this we will write with respect to customer. There are additional table also which we will add later on, but at this moment to begin with, these are mandatory for us to know. If I put every list, you do not know what to remember, right? So we will write something which is mandatory for everybody to remember, for everybody to know without any exception, without any excuses. Am I clear?
Yes sir.
Next one is about customer document. When we talk about customer document. Now from customer document onward, there are two points. One is accounting document. Second one is like your customer invoices slash payments. Understood?
Yes.
Yes sir.
Okay. Now accounting document is a something which is common for all the debit credit, wherever you talk about accounting document. It will have the same table, this one. It will have the same table, this, this is common. Wherever there is a debit and credit posting, it will go to BK PF, B sec, AC Doka, Fagel Flexa. These four are blindly updated in SAP system, especially S four. When you're talking about S four HANA system, if you are referring to accounting document, one table that you need to remember is AC Doka. What is mandatory?
Doka.
AC Doka. What is this? What is the update that it will get and all? I will make you understand practically within the table. Okay, with practical information, practical data, we will understand it. Now similarly, when you talk about customer, it is similar to GL open item. We understood all your customer account, vendor account is a reconciliation account, right?
Yes.
Yes sir.
We also understood a statement called as all reconciliation accounts are by default open item or not?
Yes sir, by default open item.
All reconciliation accounts are by default open item management, meaning it is similar to this.
Yes sir.
Now here customer meaning S will be replaced with what? For customers.
D.
D.
Change D. Here also change D. Clear?
Yes sir.
Yes sir.
Okay. Now same logic, we will apply to vendor. I'll put vendor master. Same thing. It is BP vendor. For BP vendor, T code is what?
BP only.
BP.
For BP vendor, T code is BP only, I'll put BP here. And table. BP tables will begin from BOT. They will remain constant, BOT triple zero fixed.
BOT one hundred.
And BOT one hundred fixed. Similarly, now you need to look at this one. KN is replaced by LF.
LF A one. LF B one.
This will be LF B one. And this one.
LF.
M one.
LF M one.
We will verify, every table we will open, we will check what is this, what is happening and then we will start writing meaning of every table. Now we are only getting to know what is each table. So that we get that familiarity, then we will create a fresh company code. In that fresh company code, we will do different assignments like you're in a project. What information you need to understand, how you need to understand, we will practically see this point. Similarly, second one is here. Vendor documents. When we talk about vendor document, two points. Accounting documents. And vendor invoices and the payments. I'm not writing a T code because there are multiple T codes here, right?
Yes sir.
So when you talk about accounting document. Blindly you need to remember this. Vendor document, you'll have to put this. What will be replaced?
D will be replaced.
K.
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 D with K.
D with K.
Alright, BS IK, BS IK. And then these are the tables that you need to remember. And one more point that we need to remember is bank master. In short, let us be very particular. House Bank Master. If you look at Bank Master, we may get confused. Bank GL master, it is not Bank GL master, it is House Bank Master. First one. Let us put House Bank slash account ID. You will create it with what? FI twelve. Table.
Yes.
T zero twelve K, T zero twelve K.
T zero one two.
One thing is T zero twelve. And another one is T zero twelve K. Remember whatever table we are writing here, every table is very, very important. Nothing can be ignored. I'm not writing any table which you can ignore, which you can take it light. So every name, whatever is listed on the Excel sheet must be taken very seriously. Clear it?
Is noted Ajay.
Yes sir.
This is your House Bank and then account ID. Transaction for the bank, what will happen? Everything will go to accounting document only. As of now. If you look at accounting document for bank. Same table.
It's BK PF.
Yes sir.
It will be the same table. Now what we listed? We listed tables related to GL. Tables related to customer. Table related to vendor and then table related to house bank. That is what we did so far. Right?
Yes.
Now this covers two aspect. Point number one from the master data point, point number two from the transaction data point, understood right?
Yes.
Yes sir.
From master data point of view, what are the table? And from the transaction data point of view, what are the table we listed? Which you need to understand, which you need to remember. How you don't, it's up to you. How you remember? It is up to you because everybody will have your own approach. You by heart it, you write down whatever the effort that you put it. But please put it, ensure you will remember it tomorrow. In your interview, literally people will want you to tell this table. Clear it?
Yes sir.
When you attend the interviews tomorrow, people want you to tell this table name also. They are least bothered about T code, but they are more particular concerned about what is the table for this. If you tell the table, they are more than happy with what you're talking. If you tell only the T code, they are not convinced. So they are expecting, looking for you to tell the table. Make sure accordingly you will practice, prepare and then remember. After this, what we need to do? There is something called functional specifications. Anybody heard this term called functional specification?
Yes.
Yes sir. Customization.
Okay. When we talk about functional specification, we are referring to customization. Somebody called as FS, referring to functional specification. Somebody called as FSD, referring to functional specification document. But either ways, it is the same. What I want you to remember or do here is first point. There are two types of processes in SAP. One is
standard.
Standard. Second one is
customize this.
Custom process. Standard process meaning as per the SAP configuration. So far you created GL account. You created GL posting, you have seen GL report. Similarly, you created customer account, customer posting, customer report. And vendor account, vendor posting, vendor report. Everything was working fine with your configuration or not?
Yes, working fine.
Right? If you are able to do the config, if you are able to see the result, then it is called as standard SAP process. Sometimes what will happen? Whatever is provided by SAP, it is not meeting your requirement, you are not happy with it. You want to add additional pounds to it or you want to make some correction or whatever you want, it is not available. You wanted to go for a customization. You want to go for a different solution to it. That is where your customization will come into the picture. On the customization. Here we will use standard SAP configuration. Right?
Yes sir.
Standard process means you will use standard SAP configuration. Whatever T codes are provided, config is suggested by SAP. If you use it, if it is working fine, it is meeting the business requirement. Sometimes it may not meet the business requirement. In that case, what we will do, you will go for a custom process. Here we will use what?
RISE object.
Here you will be using RISE F object. Now there are two points here. Point number one. RISE F or this. Both are same, the only difference is W at the beginning, W at the end.
Yes sir.
Yes sir.
Somebody will call it as RISE F W object. Somebody will call it as RISE F object, both are same. If I keep it W at the beginning, I will tell RISE F. If I keep W at the end, I'll call it as RISE F W. Don't get confused, people might call it in two ways. Now next one. This is A star two X star. And this is Y star.
Y. Z.
Z star. Meaning if you are looking at anything, let it be a T code, let it be a table, let it be whatever. If it is the beginning from A to X, it is a standard. Am I clear?
Yes sir.
Yes.
If it is starting from A to X, it is a standard. If it is starting from Y to Z, it is custom. So far we were looking at a transaction code, starting from F, table starting from T, B, A, F. Correct or not?
Yes, correct.
Anywhere did you find anything starting from Y and Z so far in your practice?
No.
No T code started from Y, no T code started from Z, yes sir or no?
Yes.
Yes sir.
So any T code, any program, whatever it is in SAP, if it is starting from A to X, it is SAP standard. If it is a custom object, if it is a customization process, it must begin from Y to Z, understood?
Yes sir.
It can be anything, it can be a T code, table, program, whatever it is, it must begin from Y to Z. And here for any customization. We need to give the logic to the technical team. What you'll have to give?
Logic. Logic. Logic.
You'll have to give the logic.
Sir, I have a one question. So in my current project, they are using with, starting with R sir actually, that is custom program. That is custom program only. They are using with R.
Maybe they would have taken that approach, but ideally, it is supposed to be Y and Z. You need to ask. Someone in your project, you, you need to ask your technical team specifically about why they are using R. Put a question to them. If there is any logic behind it, they will make you understand, they will tell you why they are using R. But ideally, it is not recommended, it is supposed to be strictly Y and Z.
Yes.
Okay. For any customization, we need to give the logic to technical team here. Technical team. Is equal to. ABAP consultant. Mostly ABAP only, very rarely you will talk to basis and all. But when you are talking about a technical team, stick to ABAP. Clear it?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
You will give the logic to a web consultant now. While. Writing. Any logic. We must use the tables. What you will have to use?
Tables.
Tables. Tables.
You must use the table. T code will not work, report will not work, nothing will work, you will have to strictly use the table. Okay? Clear so far?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
We will not go deep into it at this moment because all we need now is getting a familiarity, that's it. Once we become familiar to it, as we move forward on the different other topic configuration. I will make you understand what it is with practical examples. Clear it so far?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Though all these are theoretical, but every point is very, very important. You need to have familiarity on every point without having any confusion. Because going forward, whatever config we will do, whatever topic we will discuss. Every topic, every configuration contains these parameters. Understood right?
Yes.
Everything contains this parameter where you need to practically connect with each and every point. Okay. Now. To see the data in. Table. We must use. A T code. What is that T code to use a table? To see the table. S E sixteen N. You will have to use S E sixteen N table. And this table is similar to report. I am not opening any table now because. I just want you to go through these points like theory points only, without even looking into SAP. Then, we will practically open SAP because before we get into SAP, I wanted to make sure. All these points, whatever we discussed in the last couple of a session, you must be familiar at least. Fifty percent. Understood right? So that once we start discussing these points practically. You will start understanding it conceptually, you will relate what is this in a detailed manner. So far, are these points clear?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, sir.
This might look a very simple, but a little tricky, a little confusing unless you sit on it couple of times, you will not get the clarity. Because there is no example here, right? It's only the theoretical one-liners.
Yes.
We are not elaborating anything, we are not expanding anything, we are just writing what is what. And here, when you go through all this point, it is very much possible you get into confusion. But avoid that confusion, to avoid it, what you do is, write down everything. In an Excel sheet, keep a separate Excel sheet for yourself. Or take a, keep a separate notebook in which you write down all the key points. In such a way that tomorrow when you start preparing for your interviews. This notebook, points whatever you are writing, everything must be a ready reference for your interview preparation. Got my point right? So, when you start preparing for your interviews, when you are thinking that okay, let me now. Give. Job trials and all probably from next month, I don't want you to. Sit and then open company code, chart of account, fiscal year again. Which should never be a case. Okay, you need to have everything already worked out. Just it should be like a reference for you. Don't sit and then put your effort, put your effort from now itself. As and when, when we discuss about a different point, I will tell what you need to do. Put that effort properly and then make sure this you will document somewhere. Maybe in an Excel sheet or in a notebook. Either ways, whatever you feel comfortable. Prefer writing it in a notebook. If you prefer writing it in a notebook. If I tell you to do it in an Excel sheet, what everybody will do, Ctrl C, Ctrl V, am I correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Take a screenshot, paste it, agree? Don't do it, it's a shortcut. It's a shortcut, don't follow the shortcuts because for this, there is no shortcut. Don't refer, don't follow any shortcut, strictly take a notebook, take a pen, write down. When you write it down, for sure you have to write it properly, otherwise you have to waste the paper, right? Write in such a way that tomorrow, maybe after one month, after two month, after three month. It has to help you in your interview preparation. Keeping it in your mind and then write it. So, make sure you focus on your handwriting also, sometimes what happens? If you write, after one hour, you will not understand what you wrote. Exactly right? Am I correct?
Yes, correct.
Yes, sir.
That I don't understand my own handwriting. This is fact. That is why I don't write, anything on paper, I don't write. Except my sign, even if I put my sign three times, it comes in three different ways. I am that much accurate. So, when I go to bank, every time I find a difficulty, I have to go to the accountant, ask them to show me, show my signature. I will copy my own signature. Because whenever I sign, every time it will fail. They say that signature is not matching. Alright, so you have to be confident that okay tomorrow when you refer it, make sure you understand what you are writing. Understood right?
Yes, yes.
Yes, sir.
Otherwise, your effort will be wasted. And don't give any chance for you to rework on this kind of thing. It's a one-time effort which will allow you to prepare, practice confidently for your interview preparation, maybe two, two months or three months down the line. Once these points are clear, you need to make sure. Like. Process flow explanation. This is something that you will have to. Do it. Meaning. So far, what we have done, we have done first point. Baseline. Configuration, right? From a company code creation until consistency check.
Sir.
Yes, sir.
From a company code creation until consistency check, you did baseline config and then what you did? Point number two.
GL Master.
GL Master creation.
Creation.
Till. GL reports. So, it covers GL creation, cost center creation, profit center creation, GL posting. GL report, line item, trial balance and all.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Third one. AP. Baseline. Configuration. Okay. Fourth one. Vendor creation. Till vendor reports which includes. Your business partner configuration, AP configuration. Vendor creation, BP creation, invoice posting, credit memo posting, payment posting. Line item report, balance report, aging report, right?
Yes.
Everything is included here. Same logic. Point number five. Your AR. Baseline configuration. And then point number six. Customer creation. Till. Customer reports. Same thing. Accounts receivable config, BP configuration, number range and all. Similarly, customer creation, customer invoice, customer credit memo. And then customer payment, customer line item report, balance report, aging report. Another point here. The moment you are talking about AP, first point which should strike our mind as per our previous understanding. Is F I M M integration purchase order cycle?
Yes, good to be second.
Alright, it must be included by default here. Similarly, when you talk about AR. It has to be what?
F I S D integration.
Go to C.
F I S D integration, O two C cycle, sales order and all must be included. So, though we are not writing all these points, you have to remember all this point. If I write every point that there is nothing called your exercise, your activity rate. Then it is called as you are reading from the Excel sheet, I don't want you to read from Excel sheet. Take the task from Excel sheet and then put your effort. And this has to be done in such a way that. How you prepare, it's up to you. When I say how you prepare, it's up to you, everybody has got your own. Strategy, your own approach. But at the end, what I want you to do is. If you start talking about baseline configuration. If you start from company code and you need to end at what? Consistency check.
Yes, sir.
Yes, consistent.
Starting from company, company code, ending with consistency check. Take an Excel sheet, write down all the points. Create company, company code, assignment, chart of account, group, whatever. Write down all the points. When you write down all the point, make sure you go further only after creating a company code from your points. For example. I am practicing it now. I will take an Excel sheet, I will write down, okay, this is the step, this is the step. I will put all the ten, fifteen, twenty, whatever it is. Before I go further, what I will do, looking at this step. I will go to SAP, I will create a company code. When I create a company code, I will make sure. If I follow all these steps, I am able to create a company code, do a consistency check without any error. Understood?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So, you test it. If anywhere you are facing a problem, maybe because you missed the sequence. Third step is becoming fourth, fourth is becoming a third, right? Make sure you swap it, make sure the sequence is correct. If you follow it, you will be in a position to create a company code and do the consistency check without any problem. Not everything is a dependent, there are certain things which are having a dependency, certain thing. You can create left and right, it is okay. Now, make sure you do it in such a way that you are not confused. Will you test it? Sahil, can you please go on you? Make sure you are testing it and you are not getting any confusion, after that. Everybody is using WhatsApp, right?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Go to WhatsApp, search with you, Y O U. Can I search in WhatsApp with you?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
What will happen? You can message yourself, right? You can talk to yourself?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So, go to you. Open voice message, everybody is aware how to put a voice message?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Open the voice message to yourself. Explain this baseline configuration. How you talk, how you explain, it's up to you. Explain it, send the voice message, listen to it. After that delete it, don't keep any message with you. Strictly delete it. If you keep it, after one month, you will listen to the same message, right?
Yes.
Yes. Don't keep any record, don't keep any proof. Leave it everything, keep it in your mind, not in your WhatsApp. Okay, this is only to make sure it is working fine. Understood? If you are comfortable, okay, I think I am able to explain everything. Now, it's up to you, whether you talk only the point, whether you talk including the transaction code, you. Include both up to you. Or first you will see that, okay, first let me only talk the process. Then I will add it T code, whatever the way you feel comfortable, it is just that you are giving an effort. Once you are comfortable till here, only then go to second, don't go to two without completing one. Understood?
Yes.
Yes.
First, go to point number one, once you are comfortable explaining this in a flow. Go to point number two, in point number two, you talk, okay, first we will have to create a GL account, to create a GL account. Go to F S double zero. Then after GL is created, you will have to create a profit center, to create a profit center, go to. K E fifty one, then create a cost center, K S zero one. After that, create a GL document, go to F dash zero two. Simple, simple only, don't complicate it, don't tell like a big, you know, story.
Sorry.
Keep it very simple, one-liners only. Got my point right? Don't elaborate everything, not required. Only one-liners, just to make sure with that one line, it should automatically strike your mind, what to happen? And the way you feel comfortable and then improvise it. Whatever the way you feel, I think I am feeling more comfortable like this, do that way only, at the end. You need to feel confident, comfortable, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Whatever the way you feel comfortable, do it that way. Similarly, once this is done, go to AP. Same thing, AP baseline config. Tell vendor group, vendor tolerance group. Number range, assignment, BP grouping, BP number range, C V I, all this kind of thing. Once this is done, stop it, okay, this is the config. Then go to. Vendor creation. Tell, okay, we need to create a vendor, to create a vendor, we have to go to BP, we need to select BP grouping. And then based on the BP grouping, you will automatically get vendor grouping through C V I configuration. Once BP vendor is created, you will have to create an invoice. To create an invoice, we have to go to F dash forty three. And then if you want to post any adjustment, you will have to create a credit memo, for credit memo, go to. F dash forty one, after that you will have to create. Payment, to create a payment, you go to F dash fifty three, for making a payment, you can make. Cash payment, bank payment, for bank payment, create a house bank. To create a house bank, you go to this, go to that and all. Then to see the report, vendor line item report, vendor balance report, vendor aging report. Then go to AR. Same process, whatever you did it for vendor, swap it with customer. Same process for vendor, swap it with customer, you will get the process, right?
Yes.
And make sure you are able to talk, you are able to explain to yourself, not to anyone.
Right.
And don't cheat yourself. That is why I am telling you to message yourself, don't discuss with anyone. Clear?
Clear, sir.
Yes, sir, clear.
If you are able to talk to yourself today, tomorrow you will be able to talk to your interviewer.
Thanks.
No written interviews for SAP Fico. Job, everywhere it is oral exams, right? Meaning you need to talk.
Yes, sir.
Interview, somebody will put a question, you need to talk. So, start practicing this from now on. Now you have very minimal, whatever we did, everyone is aware, right? Do it, it becomes a habit, it becomes a practice and going forward. When we discuss about a different, different points, I will tell you what you need to prepare. Understand from interview point of view, accordingly put the same effort. And when it comes to, towards your end. You don't need to put much effort on your interview preparation and there is no fear for anyone. You will be in a position to easily prepare, talk to anyone about your SAP Fico. Okay, at the end, how you are talking, how confident, comfortable you are, matters in the market. You will have to strictly keep this in your mind, accordingly move forward, you are able to configure. Do everything in system but unable to explain is a big problem. Correct or not?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, correct.
Alright, so nobody can help you in that case. You already know, but you are unable to explain. That is very difficult situation. So, make sure we don't get into that situation, put your effort, you have lot of time now. Another two to three months time is there. Another two to three months time is there, slowly you can start putting your effort, by then you will become expert. Meaning by then you will be sufficient. You'll be with sufficient confidence to speak out to anyone in any interview, there is no fear. And you feel comfortable to talk. To any interviewer, you feel be, you will be feeling confident and that is what your end target, am I right?
Yes, sir, you are right.
How much you are configuring, nobody cares. Whether you practice whole day, whole night. Without even sleeping, without even eating, nobody cares. Then little, tell me what you understood, tell me what you learned. If you are unable to tell, gone. Make sure at this level, you are not making any mistake and then you are not taking any chances. Simple, simple effort will give you a result that you will be happy with tomorrow. And I might ask anyone randomly in between. Sometimes I might also ask you or I might ask you to send me a voice message with this. Understood, right?
Yes.
Even when I ask you to send a voice message like this, send me a one-time message. Everybody knows how to send a one-time message, right? Maybe like when I listen one time, it will disappear.
Yes.
We can do it even for voice messages, it? Yes, no?
You can do so.
Yes, no.
When I put any message to anyone randomly, please send me one-time view. So that in case if I am not able to. Listen it properly, I might ask you to resend it, then you have to re-record it, right?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
That is one reason, second reason, you have to be confident, feel comfortable that that one time I cannot forward to anyone, right?
Yes, sir, right.
Yes.
So feel free to. Send a message without having any, any, you know, discomfort stating what if I forward it to somebody? See how this person is talking and all, that will never happen. Only for that I am telling, send me a one-time message. One-time you message. I'll just listen to it. Then I will get to know, okay, how you are preparing. Clear?
Yes, sir, clear.
Yes, no. Yes, sir.
Alright, so. This is it for today, but I hope you have got sufficient information to put your effort.
Yes.
Right, you have to.
Yes.
Put your time, effort in such a way that. You will gain confidence in such a way that going forward, all the topics whatever we see are automatically simplified. When I say automatically simplified, every topic is like thirty minute you will configure, fifteen minute you will understand, hardly one, two, two hours. You'll be, you'll be able to understand a topic. And then you will be able to configure tested topic. For you to make sure the going forward, the topics will be simplified, your learning will be more. Easier, put these things in a strict or in a serious note. I don't get any benefit, it's all for your benefit, right?
Yes.
So you will be, get the benefit and then you will see the result, not now, when you are in the market. Once you leave me, then you will realize what this will make or how this will make you different in the market. Okay? So that has to be the point. Especially when you join a company tomorrow, you need to feel. Confident, comfortable to work and for that to happen, no other option, no other excuse, no other shortcut, you have to do it. Only if you do all this kind of a thing, I will be giving you different other assignments, activities to be performed. Understood, right?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Alright. Fine then, let me stop this recording now.